I've got two. I've got our rec board resignation and appointment. Let's put it right after delinquent accounts. And also Kelly's here with the interns. Let's put them after airport status reports. Minutes, June 11th, 2018, regular meeting.
I would approve the minutes.
Any more discussion council? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Payroll vouchers, number 18 dash 06, June wages and salaries.
I would approve payroll voucher, number 18 dash 06, June wages and salaries.
I second it. I'll be second. Any more discussion council on payroll vouchers? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Accounts payable, checks pre-written, accounts payable for June.
I would approve the June checks pre-written and June accounts payable.
Any more discussion council? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Moving on, delinquent accounts.
Yes.
Is that a rental house?
Anything else to comment on delinquent accounts? Moving on, rec board resignation and appointment for, I shouldn't have said Lincoln, 298. They got a letter of resignation for Gina Eckhart. And the board's recommendation was Nikki Flynn. So I entertain a motion to appoint Nikki Flynn to the rec board.
Nikki Flynn will adhere to that?
I guess.
Okay, then I approve the appoint Nikki Flynn to the rec board to take Gina's spot for the school district.
I second it.
Any more discussion council? All in favor?
Aye.
Emergency sirens, LCEM Director David Does here.
Thank you for allowing me to come speak to you this evening. I know Heather had put a packet of paperwork in your packet at your table. I'm just going to read from a prepared statement, and you can follow along if you like, and at the end, if you have questions, please feel free. Back on May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, there were significant storms that came through Lincoln County. On the first, there was rotation spotted by a train spotter in the area of the practice football field, and the sirens were activated. Law enforcement was directed by the sheriff to drive up and down the streets of the community to make citizens aware of the weather, and also to ask them to take cover. Through this process, I was upstairs in my office in the courthouse and lost internet access at the courthouse as there was a lightning strike in the near vicinity. The same evening, there was rotation spotted by a train spotter in the Beverly and Barnard area. This was the same night that the EF3 tornado went through Ottawa County. The tornado was on the ground for 29 minutes and roughly 14 miles. The base of the tornado was half to three-quarters mile wide. Power was knocked out in the Beverly and Barnard communities, and volunteer firefighters were asked to go to their respective stations and get in the trucks and drive around the communities and make announcements pertaining to the weather and direct the public to go inside and seek shelter because of the severe weather. Corrective actions were determined after the event. Lincoln County needed to have one central source for tornado siren information, maintenance, and record-keeping. The repeater board for Lincoln County has agreed to be the primary agency in charge of maintenance and checks pertaining to the sirens, the siren systems in Lincoln County, as they're already in charge of maintenance issues and biannual checks of the repeater system. They have a technician from Minneapolis area that is contracted, and if there are any issues that need corrected, are fixed. The seven members of the repeater board are Richard Ansel, Mark Lovin, John Alquist, Randy Rathman, Brett Kingen, Jay Corr, Jeremiah Zacco, and Troy Anderson. And currently, Richard Ansel is the chairperson for the fire board. Each fire district, emergency management, EMS, the city of Lincoln, all pay $300. Both school districts pay $100, and the health department pays $200 for yearly dues to the repeater board. These funds are collected and utilized to help pay the cost of the technician for checking the system and making any corrections or upgrades or updates. The repeater board would ask each community to pay $300 additionally annually into this account. When the fire sirens are activated, it is the fire department that is utilizing this asset. When severe weather is imminent and life safety is at risk, it is the community's responsibility to activate the siren and make people aware. Back on June 11th, 2018, I approached the Lincoln County Commissioners and asked them if I could approach each city in the county and ask if the city councils, if they would allow Lincoln County to take ownership of the sirens and maintain insurance coverage on the sirens. K-Camp, the insurance carrier for the county, had advised that if Lincoln County was able to show ownership of the sirens, that they would not have any issues with having them covered under the policy of the county. The repeater board and I are looking at writing grants to facilitate updating sirens in Lincoln County. We have contacted Storm Sirens Inc., a company out of Norman, Oklahoma, and have received quotes on Century Sirens. I've attached paperwork specifically with information about the sirens for the city of Lincoln, pages 3 through 6 of this packet of paperwork. The intent is to replace the sirens in the communities in Lincoln County, along with the siren in Hunter, as it is part of the Lincoln County Fire District, and then also add a siren to the Vesper Community Building for the Vesper Community. The cost includes sirens and the decoder to be able to interact with the paging system located in the law enforcement center. There are decoders within the county currently that were put back in service back in the 90s. The information that I am presenting to you is without battery backup, as generally the battery backup system is usually only good for around five years, and then you are responsible for updating that on a five-year basis. The repeater board has looked at the cost of battery backup for each system, and it was determined that after five years you're replacing the battery, so we are looking at a grant to assist in purchasing a 20-kilowatt generator that would be tied into the fire department. When power goes out in the community, the generator would automatically engage and run through the duration when power is restored to the community. I approached Precision Electric and was quoted a cost of $8,000 per community, and this cost would be for the generator, installation of the generator, and the wiring to complete the project. However, with the generator that is in place at the law enforcement center, I am not sure if this would be an item that would be needed for the city of Lincoln. The cost to add an additional two sirens to the city of Lincoln would be $39,900, complete and installed, turnkey-ready through this company. The company has stated that they would place two medium-sized sirens located at or near the intersections of North 4th Street and North Street, and South 4th Street and South Street. The overall cost of the project for the 11 sirens for the locations is $140,550. I have previously spoken to the Lincoln County Commission about matching funds for this project, and they advised me that if the repeater board could take ownership of the sirens, and if the county could insure them through their insurance carrier, then they would match funds, yet to be determined amount. I spoke to the Assyria City Clerk, and she advised me that the Dangie Hansen Foundation gave them $10,000 to update or upgrade their tornado sirens in their community. This happened within the past three years. Do you folks have any questions for me?
Isn't there currently a siren at the opposite corner of 4th and South Street? Around the playground?
I know there's one located at the school.
Yeah.
At the grade school in the parking lot area.
And that other one would just be right on the other side of the park.
Or again, too, at no cost to the city, with my grant-writing ability, Lisa, thank you. I would be looking at purchasing the sirens, and the county would do the in-kind match. Again, with the two sirens you already have in place, I've heard from various people within the community that you can't hear the siren out on North Street, or, excuse me, on 9th Street, and you can't hear it out of the school. I'm well aware of that. Again, if there could be a more strategic location, I don't think this company would be opposed to setting the sirens wherever we wanted to go with them. But, again, that's yet to be determined or discussed. Again, still in the groundwork of contacting all the communities within the county and Hunter to see if they would be on board with this. So I'm just kind of laying the groundworks, but I wanted to come at least address this with the council.
So they're going to install one, does that mean they bring their poles too, and dig the holes?
Turnkey-ready. Turnkey-ready, they're doing all that stuff, yes.
So what are you asking the city for, to give you our sirens that we have now?
And if the city wants to maintain those sirens on their own, that's a discussion that you folks can have at another time, or, again, we can discuss it this evening. I just wanted to be able to have on record that you folks said yes, with the purchase of these two new sirens wherever they're placed, that the county would cover those insurance-wise and be responsible, and the repeater board would be responsible for the technician that comes in and does the biannual checks on the equipment and stuff.
So you're asking for an increase of $300?
Yes, ma'am.
So it'd be $600 a year?
A year, correct.
And you would take care of the new sirens?
Correct, and the radio frequencies with whatever we have done to them.
And if we wanted to turn our other sirens over, you're willing to take them on too? I'm asking.
And again, if your agency was willing to do that, again, that would have to be a discussion that I would have with the repeater board, because, again, I think the sirens were put in in 2009.
I think so.
If I remember correctly, Jess and I have previously spoke. But, again, the decoders, those already may be an issue. Again, those were out quite frequently, and, again, I've been quoted every five years that you should be updating your decoders for the equipment that interacts with the console of the sheriff's office.
What involvement do you have, Jess, with that? Do we test them? How's that work? I guess I don't know.
They are tested, but they, the sheriff's office.
Oh, the sheriff's office tests them, so we don't touch them as far as those go?
We don't have anything to do with them.
Okay. So technically, we don't have anything to do with them anyways, really, I mean, right? Other than the city owns them, I mean?
No, I mean, as far as if somebody has to work on them, we have to get somebody in to work on them.
Got you.
I mean, it's simple to confuse what you do, but if you're talking about the board or something, there's no doubt.
Correct.
So if we give them to the county, and something happens to them, then the county fixes them?
Dave, is there anybody at the state level that can give us some guidance on placement of these sirens? If we've got two sirens at the opposite ends of the city right now, and they're not giving us good coverage, I'd hate to put up new sirens and still have the same situation.
Right. And, again, I could communicate with someone at the state. I'm going to be down in Wichita on the 25th and 26th for the fourth of four sessions for a basic emergency management class, and high-ranking K-Down Kansas Department Division of Emergency Management officials are there. I could communicate with them, or, again, I could shoot them an email and get a response, and then forward it to Heather, and she could divulge that information to you, as.
And for planning on putting a lot of money, whoever ends up putting the money in the new sirens, I think that that's a problem that needs to be studied.
Right.
You point out in your letter here that if we went to a battery backup, they'd have to be replaced every five years. Do we have any cost comparison between doing that and paying for a generator?
Overall, the generator, 20-kilowatt generator from Northern Resources, I think, is who Precision uses or has access to, was about $4,000.
$4,000 for the generator?
Generator itself, yes. Yes, for a 20-kilowatt generator, this is roughly $4,000.
Installed and zayed.
Right, and with electrical and all that.
And then it includes wiring to the sirens.
And that would be part of Precision's cost also. With that, again, the sirens that are currently in place are automatically on battery backup at the sheriff's office regardless, unless something specifically happens at the pole, then.
Which, if that happens, it makes everything different.
Correct, correct. So, again, I don't know if a generator, again, would be beneficial for the city of Lincoln or not, but I just want to put that information in there also. And, again, I'm looking at a separate grant for the 11 communities, roughly $40,000 for generators for each one of those fire stations also, or Vesper, the community center.
And so, if the generator system's going to work, that's still going to be cheaper than replacing the batteries every five years?
Correct. And if it's already in place, then it's a moot point for the city. But, yes.
What's the, so, let me understand how this works, that there's currently battery backups that are wired directly to the sirens, or is that just for the activation equipment, the decoders?
The decoders are what's in place currently. And, again, as far as the Lincoln sirens, I have no idea about what's.
But with these sirens, are, is it just the, the decoders are what, turn them on and off, is that accurate?
That interacts with the siren and the paging system up at the sheriff's office, correct.
And that's what would be on the backup generators? What actually powers the siren itself?
Power.
City power?
City power, correct.
So basically, if the electricity's out, it doesn't really matter, because the siren's not going to go off anyway?
That's correct. And like in the smaller communities, for example, up in Barnard, their current sirens across the street and south of their fire station, half a block, and with this discussion with this company, it's been discussed that when they come up and put the poles up, we'd prefer to have the poles beside the fire stations, hence the generators, and alleviate that backup problem. So then if the power was out, like at the sheriff's office, when I used to dispatch there, power would go out, and the generator automatically kicks on. There's something tied in with the city's circuitry or whatever in that panel back behind there, but we've talked about that, having that capability with Precision, and they understood what I was requesting and asked, and that was the $8,000 quote for the electrical on top of the generator.
There's a discussion about the 1st, 2nd, and 3rd of May, did the sirens not work?
The sirens did here, they did here, but, again, over in Beverly and Barnard, they did not, because they were tied into.
Because they had no power.
Correct, because of the tornado that went through Ottawa County, tore up, and I can't, I'm drawing a blank on the name of the electric company in the eastern part of the county right now, but that was compromised because of that situation.
Yeah, Beverly had no siren.
Yes, I'm just, I'm just trying to work this out in my head, how the generators, because if they're not hooked directly to the siren.
They would have to be.
Yeah, it doesn't matter if you can activate the siren, if the siren's got no power, it won't work. So that's part of it, I'm just trying to figure it out.
Right, right. And, again, I don't know if there's room down on the county slot down here on the corner, or if there could be a generator put down there.
I don't know. They're saying that they want the siren right beside the generator, basically.
That's what I myself would prefer.
Okay.
The company hasn't instilled that, no, or hasn't conveyed that, no.
So then there'd only be one siren that went on?
But, again, if there's a primary siren, again, I, just discussion stage right now.
You'd have to have a generator for each siren, or have it wired to.
Yeah.
And then you've got to have a fuel source for the generator, and.
And, again, with that, looking at outlining places, Denmark, for example, we're already currently on propane. Again, the Denmark siren, I can hear it at my place, and I live half-mile away, and I know Leo Lesser lives north of Denmark, mile and a half, and the weather conditions are just right, and not including the wind, he can hear the siren also. But, again, we're on propane, and I know Westmore's on propane also. Propane's more efficient than gas, because how often do you run that gas out of that gas tank, and that gas is sitting there? And then you're running into problems with maintenance on that, so.
I know the sheriff's department even has time to look at if a generator doesn't work, because it sits and it doesn't run.
And I know, I know speaking, when I used to dispatch there, that was my project, where I was appointed to do monthly generator tests, and, again, I can't confirm nor deny that those tests are still getting done.
I think the generator not to be wrong, I think the generator they're talking about is to make sure you get a signal to the sirens.
That's not going to do you any good if you're trying to power the siren.
But that's, you know, the sheriff's office, which he knows that he has a generator already for, but they can call it. The only other would be is if it was local and you just had one circuit down, and that happened to be a circuit that was shooting north into town, well, then they'd have to hire to get it to the siren to get the city to, I mean, there's different ways to alter it. I mean, if you've got a total town blackout, yes, you're not going to have it. But if you're on that route, you're correct, you're going to have to have a generator at each siren.
It would seem to be easier to put battery backups at the sirens.
And, again, that's an option. Those options that are on the first bid, I think, shows the battery backup cost, and I think it was 45.5, I think, for $45,000. And then the second, the second quote on the back page had it without, for $39.5.
I'd be curious to know how much of that's actually just the batteries themselves, too, because you've got a lot of, and they've got the battery box and the chargers and all that stuff that are part of it also.
And, of course, you'll be putting this out to competitive bid if the project goes.
That far, yes, yes, once it gets approved. But, again, this company out of Norman, the reason we chose them, they were the closest representative, and five miles, excuse me, five-hour drive time in response, if they were needed to respond to Lincoln. That's part of the reason that company was chosen right now, but, yes, we have to do an RFP for this project.
What would be nice is to know if the controllers we have now could be switched out on the same controllers for the new sirens that offer the sirens we already have.
That could be a question that I could ask the person from Storm 17.
Because I kind of, you questioned their location, and we've always discussed back when we were involved in this, about having something on the east and west side, something more closer up to 9th Street and north, and then out by the school and industrial park.
Yeah, because at our place, we can't, last time we can't hear them.
Because the two we have here now were positioned before I was here. But we updated them in 2009, got new sirens involved, did all the paperwork on that, and he could work on it, but now we don't have him, if something were to go down, we'd have to hire someone.
I'm sure, there's got to be somebody at the state to help plan these systems.
Right, and that's the next thing else, where you get the best, because it seems like we're just putting them right next to the one we have.
Yeah, exactly. That might work, and, again, there might be a better place to put it. Dave, I think this is a very important project, and I encourage you to continue with it. You might want to check into, at one time Homeland Security had grants available for projects like this. I know a lot of their funding's dried up, but they still might have. Other than that, I would make a motion to approve the $300 a year increase for the repeater board as a fifth step.
If this project carries through, is my understanding, or my asking.
So if you don't get, if you don't do the siren project, you're not going to ask for the $300?
No, no, that is correct, that is correct.
Okay. And on the condition that the project goes through, I move that the city increase the allotment to the repeater board, additional $300 a year.
And would we be also able to take ownership of the sirens?
I don't see a problem with that.
Or do we want to wait until they figure out what they're doing before we?
Assuming the project goes forward, again.
Okay, okay. And, again, I'll revisit you folks, I'll be busy going from community to community for the next.
So you're motioning us to allow $300 for the project basis?
Yes, and ownership of the sirens in both of the towns.
All in second?
I second.
Any more discussion council?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, David.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Eagle Communications, easement.
You should have one in front of you in your pockets, and complain a little bit about it, how it came out, and if you haven't had a chance to look at it, it's not long. The thing that's a little bit different about it is that it blends a temporary easement relative to the use of the lot, and then a permanent easement as to the exact location where the 10-to-10 slab would be and the cabinet would be. We had some input from Eagle, of course, which we needed, as well as one of their earlier easements, and then I met with Mayor Travis and Superintendent Jess, and we kind of ground out some ideas about it, and what you see is a result of that. And I don't know if Eagle has had a chance to have any further input on it, that's the next step, but I don't think they would have a problem with it, because, number one, they were interested in getting access to the lot to put materials on it, which they got through the mayor's authorization from early on. This assures them of that, because it's treating that as a temporary easement. as a temporary easement. And this provides, because there was discussion about this, well, who mows? Well, the city will continue to mow until the permanent easement kicks in, in other words, and that's something you can discuss, but of course, the housing authority has been involved with that and has taken care of it. They've sent a letter to the city saying that they're willing to continue to do that until such time as the lot is otherwise committed, assuming to Eagle. And I guess that, that needs to be clarified at the end of the year, so maybe that could come up in the discussion. But bottom line is, this gives Eagle what they wanted in a permanent way relative to the structure that they intend to put on the lot. And you can look at the exhibit that's attached to your draft, and you see where the, the original draft had it 10 feet from the property, or from the street, but it's 12. That's what, that's needed, so that correction was made, so. And then the, of course, it has the usual indemnification provisions, because the city is, is not taking on a potential liability, of course, from what their usage of the lot would be, and that's, that's written in to easement. I don't think they'll have a problem with that. I pretty well tell you what it is. You have questions, address them.
Eagle's just going to have that slab.
That's, that's what, that's the permanent, they have to have access to that. That's what they asked for. You remember when Mr. DeWes was here, and he said, well, this is all they're wanting, and I, the question that came into my mind, well, what about the rest of the lot? Because that's 10 by 10. But they do need more than the 10 by 10 to bring their supplies on, their equipment, other things, so that's why the, that's the reason for the temporary easement.
Yeah, as soon as this project is done, they'll move all their stuff out, and the only thing that will be there is that 10 by 10 with a eight foot cabinet on it. And all they're asking for is the easement to walk on there to maintenance here.
And that would be continuing as to their cabinet. They've got to be able to get to and from that, of course, but that's, and that's basically all they asked for. But then it, then it expanded to, at one, the convenience of having the use of the rest of the lot, at least temporarily, for them to get their work done.
And I wanted to make note of that, that all those, on those little green lines, all those, that's all underground. It goes to the pole, and then from there is above. So there won't be no overhead cables to that cabinet. Everything comes in underground. So as far as mowing, I mean, it's, it's a pretty minute deal as far as the lot goes, and the city's still going to unlog, so.
So is there a reason why it has to be 40 feet away from that power pole?
I think that's more of the view, like driving, so you can, you don't have to sign as far as the stop signs.
Around the corner, okay. That'd be a little more convenient if it was closer.
Closer, right.
I see your point.
Yeah, that's what I suggested there, because that's, that's how they, how they presented it. I know Kelly has been interested in this and has had contact with Eagle, so I don't know if you want, has any questions or if she's had a chance to look at this. All right, you, I, I just mentioned, I knew you had been interested in communicating with Eagle about this, and I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the proposal or if you've heard from them.
No, I haven't. I did email them, well, I think a week or two ago, I kind of asked, do you need me to do anything, easement, just because I know that's going to be a holdup. We can't, can't really move further until they have kind of the hunger. And then earlier today, I emailed, anything I need to do for tonight, and they seemed good.
I think the mayor verbally made it clear to them that they had access to this, and I think there was a holdup. It's just a matter of needing to get their input to make it happen, and the need with Jess and the mayor.
Is that 12 feet off of the curb, far enough to...
Yes, yes, the, the right of way is marked, I think it's 12 feet was the right of way, and the other direction was 19 and a half, almost 20 feet.
And for the housing authority opinion, that lot is still, I mean, if there's something that they want to do with it later on, other than that 10 by 10 easement, I think it'll still be available for the...
Okay, but now understand, we're no longer going to maintain it, okay?
Understandable.
Okay.
Is that plenty distance between Marne County and the trucks? I don't want anybody backing that.
That's Eagle's problem tomorrow.
Me, if I'm not getting internet.
Yeah, if you're not getting internet.
Well, you know, that's interest in that lot on several occasions from other entities, so this is why the city, I think, and I think in an appropriate way, maintaining ownership of the lot subject to the easement.
Looks like there's 150 feet over there, so they're not, they're all the way on them. They're definitely on the way on half of it.
Any questions? More questions?
I would move we approve the easement agreement, vote 10 for it and 10 for mine.
Seconded, Dan. Any more discussion, council, on the easement? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Kelly. You're doing a good job. Moving on, pool compensation.
Not really. They, they call or text me once or one of those questions, but...
No, first, good.
What hourly rate are you talking about on this?
You asked for an...
Hour and an hour.
You guys asked for an invoice, so I gave you an invoice.
Hour and an hour and all the expired burritos you eat.
They're not expired, just bought them. And this isn't everything I've done. This is just what I feel was above and beyond what I should be doing.
And by for one, appreciate you filling in.
Me, too.
What hourly rate would you consider perfect? What's our, not a lifeguard rate, but what's the next one down? Manager or...
The manager, 11, I think, 11.
11, so it's unacceptable?
Fine.
I would move the payless help camp for 21 and a half hours of the rate of the manager, $10 now.
Lou seconded. Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm staying.
Lou.
For second.
Uh, Lou. Thank you, I think you earned it.
Yes. Bri, it's not going to be here.
No bri, no pride park improvement?
No, probably back to a later date.
Okay. Uh, moving on, post truck festival, park and pool use.
Just needed permission to use the park and the pool September 1st for the post truck festival. Will need the normal barricades and trash cans and...
Nothing.
Nothing, none of the normal. Nice.
When's the last day of pool being open? That, that weekend? Was it on the schedule? I guess it is. I mean, I didn't know if they were going to do...
It's actually August. I had guards that were willing to work weekends and evenings, so it's going to be open in the evenings from 5 to 8 after school starts.
Hmm. We haven't done that for a while. We're good.
Um, whatever, I want to say August, like 24th or 25th.
So it's going to...
It's like the weekend, it's the weekend before the festival. It'll be open until then.
I was just wondering if there's going to be a sit in for two or three weeks, and you know.
No, because we've got guards that said, like, one guard goes full stolen, and they don't start till, I think, 27th or 28th of August, so she said she would work evenings and...
Good. I think that is great. Well, I entertain a motion, Dan.
I move that we allow post truck festival to use the park and pool September 1st for post truck festival, involve unnecessary things they usually have.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Any more discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed?
At least they'll use, I don't know if I can tell you the rest. I can have a portion of the time if that works.
Yeah, enough time for them. I think they know they're used over time, but...
All right. No pride park improvement tonight, moving to a later date, I guess. Okay. Airport status report, again?
Well, I think the, I don't know, it's, we have that support for testers who've been involved, and I talked to airport manager, and he says everything's progressing. That is good. We have some further thoughts relative to the situation with the compensation, but I don't think we need to get into that. I think the main thing is, the reason it's on the agenda is because of the electrical report that I see is in the materials.
Jess, you want to speak a little bit about the electrical side?
I think one of the numbers was the cost of the one, that's what your, uh, whether we give them to us, they must be able to give to us. And in that cost, we would like to have someone do the underground work. We have not done the, the house that they put up, or the, you know, really yet done. And I asked Diana Olson if the city had to take this for bids, and they didn't know that the city could hire them if they wanted. And I asked for student electrics, and they were complacent, and they've done this. So I asked them to give us some numbers. After looking at the numbers, I would like for the city council to consider option three. The first one that, that he put on there, that is very, then I got visiting and talking about this, a little research, and finding out that there's going to be a problem with that. And the second one is actually very dependent, if you have something that's wrong with it, you have to, we'll try to find a location. With option three, you have the conduit there where you can put the cable in, if it's wrong, you put the cable out. Or if someday that that would happen to be, or they want three bays, would you drop the other two cables in that conduit, and it wouldn't always be there. And from option two to option three, you're talking $5,000, which would seem to be made for a little bit more money you'll have after where you continue there.
Yeah, because if you had to replace it, you're basically transferring again and putting a new, I think, trying to build something permanent, or not trying to build something to replace in five years.
So they would install, and we would do the terminate and the, and the load brakes, and we will take it up and down the pole, and then we will demolish that there, before the city.
Question, was there, has there been any consideration about bore and under those runways so that we can get a straight line? Would, would there be enough material savings to...
What, we talked about the different options on that. When they, if I understand right, with, with option three, they got to come out of the ground three times for they can pull that so far. And when, when they start talking about that, then I thought, well, I think if your expense, if I remember right, it's $12 a foot, the board, so then you're going to start talking about that. And that's your reason why I didn't.
Yeah, I just didn't, well, I guess...
But, no, it was discussed, it was discussed. In fact, we discussed doing that at the end, but then we're fighting water line, dirt line, storm line, cables, and, and the very last end, we're going to go and...
Now, would this, this would be paid for out of the funding for the airport project that's already going on, so it'd be the grant.
Right, right.
That's the goal. I mean, that's...
That's the goal.
Is to have that covered within the grant, within the contract, actually.
So what if it's not? If that's...
I don't, I don't think we considered it not, right?
I guess not. Okay, that, that was my question, is, are, I guess, I should have been a little more clear, are funds actually available to do it?
I think this is in the first, this is part of the first, you know, basically, we're just deciding which way we want to have it.
No, we, we didn't have actual bids at that point, so it's...
Right, sufficiently.
In one, four weeks back, did.
It's sufficiently covered in the project description.
The city committed $50,000 to the airport, so this in kind, well, he originally requested 72, but, or 80, and said...
78, something like that.
Said he could do with 50, because he had some other money or something. So the $50,000 for the city would be in kind, basically.
So we're not having to cover the entire 10% of the amount?
That's the way I understand from Olson, that we can do in kind without the funds.
But then we can, okay, so you, all right, yeah, right there it is, the term, the, the work, the... All right, yeah, right there it is, the term, the, the work that the city's gonna do is being calculated into the fifty thousand number. That's correct, it's on the front page. You're right. Well, I would move that we approve, uh, option three for re, uh, routing of electrical service to the airport.
Go ahead, second.
Go ahead.
Move, go ahead, second. Any more discussion, council, on the airport wiring? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Boy, this is pretty good today.
Don't rest on your roll. Keep it rolling.
Keep it rolling, uh. Summer interns, Kelly Larson's here with Mickey Blair and Bethany Dingle. I said it right, or I did not?
If you guys wanted to share one too.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so we've looked at all the ADA and transition plans, and we personally crawled through almost every square inch of this building several times. You can ask, Heather, we've done it, I don't even know how many times we've asked her key, but... And then to our findings, and taking everything into consideration, we've derived two solutions that we believe satisfy all the needs in one city hall. And so if you wanna start at the beginning here, okay?
Yeah, essentially, we have, um, just page one and page two is the existing layout of the building, the space that we have now. Just you can kinda compare what we've done to what you already have. Uh, and then there is, on page three, is the option one that we have. Uh, this is the option with no elevator, and that's just keeping, um, this space on the first floor. And basically using, kinda utilizing that garage bay area that's emptying out and just used for storage right now, and turning that into your new meeting area. Um, if you move on, the next two pages are, we have spent a lot of time looking into where, um, an elevator could go potentially, and using that space upstairs. It's, uh, this awesome space that's not being used right now because it's not accessible. So those are showing where we decided we've put in the elevator.
And it wasn't just our decision, so we've been in contact with Jill and Bea out of Portugal, and we've been in contact with the architect, and he is also in historical preservation. And so he and us have been discussing about what the best alternative would be, and if we were to put it anywhere, basically, on the western side of the building, as soon as you come in that whole corridor, all the way through the bathrooms, anywhere from there west, you'd have to go into the basement, and just all of the machinery would not be accessible to even dig down there at this point, without disturbing the building, and it'd be so much more cost than what it would be worth. So he recommended that we either put it outside of the building if we were to implement an elevator, or to put it somehow in the garage bay. So another thing that we did was also contact the Historical Preservation Society of Kansas, and they've looked over all of our documentations, and they concluded that anything that goes into that garage bay would not disturb any of the historical intent of the garage bay, so everything would work great that way, too. So basically, the two solutions that we have derived, one includes the elevator, and one doesn't include the elevator. And if you say go with option one, the one that you're not utilizing the space upstairs, you would have to add a whole new HVAC unit and electrical and essentially plumbing to have a restroom accessible from that conference area, and all things added up together would be very, very close to the bid, or not the bid, the estimation of how much the elevator would cost, just from the elevator end.
So the architect we've been in contact with, he's working on a very similar project in Pearson. And basically, he estimated the hard costs of the elevator, and then the new shaft, and then all the stock costs, so that'd be like the architect, the, um, structural engineer, things like that, would be roughly a hundred thousand dollars for all of that.
And then he also said to estimate a ten percent contingency, so then it would be hundred and eighty to hundred and twelve, that's awesome, for the elevator and everything.
That's the elevator and all the, all the changes that you've got there with the conference room?
So all, the only other change that we would have would be adding those two walls, um, if you guys can see on page five, where there's a closet and a small conference room. We did not include, we hadn't done like the cost of like those two walls, but that would include a huge cost, so that would be... If you did the elevator, that's all you really essentially have to do is just that elevator.
And then the space upstairs could also be utilized as event space, so families could come use it now, it's now accessible for grandma, grandpa, or anyone else that has a handicap, so that would be great space, too. And the small conference room upstairs is actually larger than this one, and that's the small conference room. So if you guys wanted to take your, I don't know, the, what is, what is it called?
The...
It, yeah, then you guys could always step into that room, and while everyone else could go in the other room, or vice versa, so...
What was the, what was your cost estimate for converting the garage space?
We've not done a, we haven't dug super deep into that yet. We kinda wanted to present to you guys an option to see which one you liked, or we can move forward with, um, that option if that's available.
You know that the load as it is for the HVAC is, you couldn't add anything else on to the load as it is right now?
You have to add a whole load.
But you're essentially taking a space that's already being used and using it for something else when the upstairs spaces still not being used?
It's the elevator itself, of course.
The elevator itself is forty-five thousand.
The hundred thousand is the, all the construction?
Yeah, that'd be the shaft, architecture, structure, electrical, soil, and then the building permits. He assumed that the city could wave those fees. But...
Optimize, though.
Do you have any initial thoughts or questions with the way?
I kinda like using downstairs.
Wow, it's a waste, it's a waste.
I just don't wanna lose this garage. If you go to that option, you better think about a place for handling stores.
With the garage?
You know, the elevator cost is gonna be as much as...
Renovating?
We wouldn't, it's kind of like a never rainer.
Well, and over here, with their design, there's still no bathroom over there. Because if you see, this is, this is limestone thick. So we still have no restroom.
You'd have to blow through, which you can do, and we can come up with a design where we can make the restroom accessible, but you'd have to blow through that limestone wall which is pretty big.
You have to get a structural engineer out here and another architect, and, yeah.
More dollar signs, basically, yeah.
And who knows, if it was handicapped accessible, people may utilize it more for...
That is a question we get asked all the time.
Birthdays and graduations and...
People call to us all the time, and first thing, and they ask is, is this handicapped accessible, and when I say no, they're not interested.
It's a great space, and it'd be awesome to see people use it.
So we've had several iterations of where to locate the elevator, and ultimately, I, by far, this is the best decision that we could find. So the last day we ever did last week, we actually spent a couple hours upstairs in the attic above the ceiling tiles, and only our...
I did not know this was going on.
No.
When they told me that they had, I was like, neither did I.
Did you dust while you were up there?
No, we dusted some things, our faces dusted.
We got all of our clothes.
You were getting thirties.
But we deemed that, that as soon as you go to walk up the stairs right now, how the wall jets out a little bit, so that is actually a brick chimney that is not filled with anything, there's no HVAC that runs up and down it, and there's nothing about it structural, it's just a chimney. So they just covered it up, and that is what we would essentially be taking down to make the elevator passageway through that, so...
So that's where you'd get your hole for the elevator?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the elevator would still be in the garage, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm curious how that would work.
So it goes from a square footage space of nine hundred and sixty square feet to eight hundred and eighty, so you're losing...
And it does not go to the basement, right?
It does not go to the basement.
So there is no elevator accessible to the basement?
You can, it would just be a lot more cost, I don't know if that's something that is needed, so, yeah. Essentially, you have to dig down, I think, like four feet, just to get the bottom of the elevator equipment in, um, anyway, so you could dig all the way down, it'd just be a lot more.
And since it's a hydraulic, uh, elevator, it would also go down even deeper into the ground, so if we were to, say, put that in the base or anywhere around this side of the building, it was just not really feasible either, so... And then on the second floor, the way that we arrange the elevator to open, if you are in either the conference rooms or the multipurpose room, it's not gonna disturb any of the line. So we also added another thick layer around the outside of that elevator, just for noise absorption. So it's just a thicker around the concrete using that's built in there currently. So the multipurpose room, we have two closets, so if you have a big event going on, if you wanna have a big city hall meeting, it can set up in the chest, stack of the chairs, movable tables, so...
I like that idea. So plenty of room to, if you had to clear it out, you'd be...
Oh, yeah.
Is there still gonna be an opening between the kitchen and the multipurpose room?
Um, right now, there's like that window area, but I don't have that touched at all in any of the rooms.
Okay, so that would be...
Yeah, and if you needed to, and wanted the kitchen to be bigger, you could also, um, combine the kitchen and closet space that you have now if you need it, but...
I would assume that the upstairs bathrooms are not handicapped accessible, are they?
The... Yes, they are from the opening of the door, but with the hardware on the door, no, they are not, so...
They're big enough, it's just this, what is in them makes it not, you know?
Yes.
You would have to kinda do a little bit of a change. For both upstairs and downstairs.
I think we're at that, right?
Yeah.
Right, but if we have to do both sides, it's a...
But if you are making this the assembly occupancy, then in the business occupancy, then this is the bathroom that would have to change, because this is so classified as business down here with just the office spaces, that technically, this is no longer a community space, so that is moved upstairs. So these bathrooms can be essentially stay, the ones upstairs would be the ones that would have to leave, the new fixtures. And if you're doing that anyways...
I'm all for the upstairs, I just wanna know what the cost difference, I still wanna know what the cost difference is versus...
We just have to have, uh, plumber electrician, and then you can hear him come out and make sure that we can cut through that door and everything would be fine. So why didn't that door remain that door, even accessible? And we have to add more plumbing fixtures, because then this would be the, uh, assembly occupancy, which would require you to have three fresh drills.
So is this still in your time schedule, if you could do both ways or not? I know you guys are proposing, I'm not, I just, I guess...
We have some time, um, at the end of the summer, we're allowed like two weeks with me, we're kinda just extra putting everything together, so I think we should be able to take a little bit of that a little bit more.
Into the budgeting first phase? Yeah, first phase, the first option?
The first option, there's this second option. I mean, I'm, I'm all for the upstairs, I really am, I just, I mean, it's all about the ultimate dollar, I mean...
I think from my perspective, if you had a strong leaning towards one over the other, maybe they could put a little bit more thought into the actual design and, and drawings.
Versus the...
Versus having to do all that for both, but maybe if they kind of could come up with a rough cost estimate for doing that, but not necessarily spend a lot more time...
Designing.
I guess you could say.
I got you.
I, we do have kind of extra time at the end of the summer, but I'll, I think that's gonna get, uh, whittled away pretty quick, so I just don't wanna have them kind of doing a whole lot of work on a lot of different options, if there's already kind of gonna be a strong leaning towards one, but...
I just kinda think you gotta do your pros and cons of both, and I think the community could really use a space like that upstairs, and having it accessible to everyone's a really awesome thing. Just an outside opinion, I know coming here, even the little conference room, like, that would be awesome for some of the things that we do, but...
I think by the time you, uh, if you factor in, you know, we talked about the HVAC over there, but we didn't talk about what we'd have to do to get rid of the garage doors, because I know that was a question mark that was discussed, because that's to maintain the external appearance and still seal it off, it's gonna be, or not cheap. And then, then if we go build another thousand square foot story building somewhere, that's, I, I would say we're probably, probably at least...
Probably touching the same way, yeah.
And, and I think it sounds like everybody's pretty much in agreement that, uh, it would be really nice to have the upstairs be useful space with the community, so... I'd like to see them work that up a little more.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
And this architect that we've been in contact with, he's aware, obviously, of this project, and he said he'd be willing to, um, kinda take it on, and would love to be a part of it as well, so...
He also has, specializes in historical preservation, so this building just fascinated him, he's very interested in it, yeah.
That's good.
He was great to work with, yeah.
I bet he's working on this community building in, in, in person?
Really? I don't, he didn't, I don't think he probably mentioned, I don't remember which one.
It was somewhere in the person, so...
Yeah, he said it was really somewhere...
I think it's where the Harlem Road, Roadcarers started? Or, yeah, or practice, potentially practice, it's quite a building, yeah. Yeah, it's quite a renovation and work on it. Well, I guess I entertain a motion for them, what direction then we go in, council?
I'd say just give a caution. I move that we... Allow the interns to, or work with cost estimates for renovating the upstairs.
Option two.
Option two.
Second. Any more discussion, council?
Can we put in there also what it would take to bring the bathrooms up to AD eight, cause can you guys do that? I mean, if we need new door handles, new fixtures, that way we kinda get a price on everything.
Basically, the, we need locks on the doors, different fixtures as far as in and out, and then remove the...
Panels?
The panels.
Yeah.
That's basically what they told us from downstairs, too. If you make a locking...
No, it's not, but... If the door hinge, or not hinge, the handle on the door is a locking, so then you make it kind of a family restroom or a new sex restroom, and take out, say, in the men's restroom has a dirty urinal, you take it out, and it's just a one toilet, and then take out the dividing partition, it'd be accessible.
It's, it's not as paid a product as it sounds, our counters were, you'll have, but the faucets, however, weren't considered ops, they have to be the levers, levers, but...
And did you say that these bathrooms would suffice that way, if we made those handicapped accessible, actually?
Realistically, in a perfect world, no, but in this scenario, how we're, the intent is for the upstairs to be usable, not this, because it's changing this occupancy? Yes. It would be fine.
We could just tell them our public restrooms are upstairs, and they can use that.
So that, is, is that your reason for going to unisex bathrooms, is so that you can just basically have one toilet in each one to eliminate obstacles?
So for the occupancy of code, for the international buildinghood occupancy, for this building, if it was option one... this building, if it was option one or two, there has to be at least two women's toilets, water closets, and then one men's water closet. So regardless if that's option one or option two, if it's option two, we'll have to do that upstairs or down here. But international building code isn't enforced to that point, since both of them will still be accessible for someone, so it's not like this is going to be locked off, so they theoretically could come down here and use restroom, too. So it's almost as if we're giving another water closet for the whole building, if that makes any sense at all.
If we were following occupancy load, we would have to add another women's restroom, but, and we played, we kind of messed around with that a bit with that, but then we ended up talking to Heather and like Kelly, and we just decided that it's just not, isn't enforced here, so that would just have another expense that we just kind of decided, to make them both unisex and both accessible, is more important than going through all of the expense and hassle of adding more, that's what we decided.
Excellent. Got a motion on the table? Did I get it, second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the direction they're going?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Moving on, 2019 budget, set hearing date and time, August 13th at 8:00 p.m.
I move we set the 2019 budget hearing, August 13th at 8:00 p.m.
One second.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion, Council, on the dates set for budget for 2019? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, distance report.
Have we made a decision?
Well, I think to go forward on each of those, which of course is the same person and the same, similar problem, as we discussed. Jess is referring to those two numbers of expanding issues that need to be addressed in the most, well, in the best way that we can, because we have, we have multiple violations. And, you know, we've done that kind of, to get started on it, but I need to, if you got the reporter, whatever, what you've done up to this point, which you've told me about.
I can do that, yeah. I can do that, or something along that.
Is, is there occupancy?
Pardon?
Is there occup, are they being occupied that, from one place?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Never seen anybody there thus far.
So basically, there are bigger problems than just weeds at this point.
Major problems.
Are we talking to junk, or...
Health would be one situation. Well, it's multiple because of the more than likely limited ability of the city to collect any type of fines, damages, costs, but nevertheless, they need to be addressed.
Smell?
Smell.
Is this anything the county health officer could address?
They don't do that anymore.
Oh, she doesn't?
Well, I'll get with you then, because, so we discussed some options the other day about what we could do, and I need to, need to get in touch with you then.
Let's start off with me, and pleasure this week, and whenever you're able to, yeah.
I think this one needs to take affirmative action.
No doubt about that, it's just, it's not the first time, because affirmative action has been taken by this particular person.
Is, is this abatement process that we go through, is this basically the same process as condemning the building, is that...
Well, that's what the abatement is, but this, this is beyond that, some issues, health issues, again, I forgot that they're going to be addressed. Abatement ultimately would be probably what we would jump to as quickly as possible, because of the fact that we don't expect any response from the complaint process. There's another one that was brought up, and I think it's, it is at the point where the basic process will go forward, and that's, I don't know if that's on here or not, it's on Fort Street.
Number two.
The last, the last address, I was difficult, I need to make sure.
Well, I'm not sure of that either, I didn't know that that was the name.
Number two?
It's also number fourteen.
Well, the ones the health concern, the others the weeds.
Well, number 23, we need to get on that before we got somebody else in here, we've got bigger problems, is what I'm thinking.
Well, I think Dan and Jess need to do whatever needs to be done to protect the city.
I agree.
That will follow.
Sounds good. Anything else on these? City official reports, city attorney.
The only thing that I will report, and it's not on, well, it's not officially on the agenda, it doesn't have to be, because it was on last week, or last month, and the ready, the lease has signed, the payments have been made, I think there's paperwork here for the mayor to sign and have ready, because, and that was, that had, was announced at the last meeting, that it had been approved, but we hadn't gotten the actual documents, but those are now in-house, including the payments called for in the, the lease that went into effect as of July. The interim lease payments were made, the lease was right current, the bill was accepted, it was owed on the property, and I think it's ready to move forward. And I think that lease is available to everybody in its final form.
It's good news.
Yeah, it is good news. I think, and I, and I think we've had basically very good cooperation.
They've been good.
They've responded, and I think it was just a little misfire relative to the checks and the paperwork arriving at the same time, but I guess we got it, we got it straightened out, yeah. So that's all I have, is, is that report. I think that's the ready folks, who formerly DJed probably.
Thank you, Dan. Moving on, city clerk.
He took my thunder.
All right. Nice. City superintendent.
All right, let me dive in.
Governing body, Lisa.
I have a question for Jess. That tree over there on Broom Street, above, by my house, it's right there along the street. I'm supposed to ask if you guys are going to cut that down? It's just right on the street there.
I have to look in.
Okay.
From Broom.
Right. Because I think there's a phone line that goes right underground there, but I was asked to see if you were cutting that down, and it's getting the weather to start getting out in the street.
Anything else? Elijah? No? Luke?
Go.
Jack?
Well, now, little Johnny's back in class again, and the lesson today is on sensory organs and what senses are connected to which organs, and the teacher asking, and Johnny, what do you need to see? And Johnny says, eyes, ears, and nose. And the teacher says, you're not paying attention in class again, Johnny, if you see, you're going to need your eyes. And Johnny says, yeah, but I need my ears and nose to hold up my glasses. I'm moving adjourned.
I second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Have a good evening.